This conference will now be recorded.
Informally with staff and invited guests, the board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings. So we'll start the work session with Board Communications. And Commissioner Thompson.
Well, I'm just as happy as a clam at high tide because County IT has provided me with equipment so that I can be easily seen and heard. I'd recommend every commissioner to take advantage of staff's capable support to make it easier for us to do our job with each other. And that's enough for now. We've been having neighborhood meetings. It's good. It's an exercise in trust building so that we can be good neighbors, and we hope that goes forward.
Fantastic. And thank you, County IT. Mr. Toyoka.
Good afternoon. Oh, Waco County College in the books and nice, another wonderful briefing with the county staff and getting us on board. And it feels like, you know, we have a lot of information we've absorbed lately, but you know, with more to come, but it feels really good how the progress we're making. And like I said, with the help of the county staff, it's been great.
That's great. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bangs?
Um, well, last week was a busy week with County College. I, there was a lot of information shared, a lot of information heard, and I'm very grateful that it's all written down so that I can refer to it later, because it comes at you pretty quickly. I've had a couple very positive meetings in regards to preschool promise and childcare with our, my local superintendent. And just on a note, a huge thank you from our superintendent to our wonderful Clatsop County Health Department. They have been very integral in basically helping our kids get back to school. And he was raving about the communication level that our health department has had with our school district. So I just wanted to pass that on, that across the state, we've, we've had some really positive phone calls from other people using our school district as a model. So.
That's, that's fantastic. That's great news. I'll be sure to pass that along as well. See, Commissioner Webb has joined us. Commissioner Webb, any communications to the board? You're muted.
I, yeah. Um, no, I don't think so. I don't think I have, I have any reporting to do at this time.
I will just say that I do, I kind of want to echo what Courtney just said, what Commissioner Bangs just reported. It's, it's a difficult process to get the county health department, the hospitals, all of these organizations working together in this vaccine effort. And I just, I know that it's been just very successful. We have another event at the fairgrounds tomorrow, so we'll be getting, I think, 200 more teachers vaccinated, along with 50 additional Phase 1A individuals. So it's been going very smoothly, and we're getting that structure in place. So now we just need more vaccines so we can get more people vaccinated. But, but I'm very pleased with the progress and glad that we've got a, a good framework. Okay, so next we'll discuss the form agenda. Does everybody have idea or opportunity to kind of review everything on the agenda this evening?
Yes.
Any questions, comments?
Chair Quila?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to note on the budget policies, I was gratified to see that staff had incorporated my feedback and indicated that those policies were to, to guide the staff in being responsible, but they didn't constrain the commissioners when we saw a need to do policy initiatives and, and adjust priorities. So thank you, staff, for that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Nice shout out to staff. Any comments, questions? Okay. If not, we'll go ahead and move into the public health update.
Commissioner Quila, can you hear me?
I can.
Great. Thank you. This is Mike McNichol, Public Health Director, and thanks for inviting me this evening. So as Commissioner Quila had mentioned, we did have a great event yesterday at Seaside High School. The three partners that are included in the task force, CMH, Providence, Seaside, and Public Health coordinated and had three different teams there working, and we accomplished 258 vaccines in about two and a half hours. And then tomorrow, we're going to be at the fairgrounds, and we're going to do 250 more vaccines, and as Commissioner Quila mentioned, 200 teachers and 50 more stragglers in the 1A group. Just on that topic, as of right now, we have administered 2,353 first doses, and we've had 179 fully vaccinated folks for a total of 2,532 doses given out so far in our effort. So, you know, that's, that's a pretty good percentage. We're moving forward. That's about 5% of our population. And knowing that we only get 500 doses a week, it may take longer, but we're anticipating that we're going to get more here eventually. And once the Johnson &amp; Johnson product is approved by the FDA, and it's a one-shot only shot, it'll be, it'll really make things go much faster. The two shots require more coordination. We have to see everyone the first time and then four weeks later. So we do have to keep that in mind as we move through the vaccination era. So also, just to let you know, on the other side, we have 738 cases so far. We had seven yesterday and four today. Our case rate is at 58.4 per 100,000. And the case rate is still over the standard of 109.2. So, you know, and I think everyone knows that the governor did keep us in the extreme category, although she did make some changes to, you know, what's allowed, especially in gyms and other things. Although I don't, I'm not sure how that really would work technically for a 500 square foot pace with one person, but at least they get a lot of attention. Anyway, so, and so far, that's what I've got for report, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Well, I just want to say our county health director has been doing just a fantastic job. Please pass along to Vincent Arts and Tiffany Brown and Lucas as well. I mean, we just, I mean, I can't say enough about how much work it takes to put these vaccine clinics on, together on top of doing all of the testing, doing all of the other responsibilities. It's just, it's an incredible task, and, and we've just been, been handling it admirably. And I just, it's really thanks to Dr. McNichol and his hard work there. It's, it's a great team.
Yeah, it's, and thank you much. Thank you, commissioners, for all the great work. And you are especially really thrilled that we've been able to help the schools. Also, just want to let you know that as of tomorrow, all of the Jewels School District teachers will be vaccinated and NAPA. So actually, if you look at it that way, 40% of our schools will be completed with their vaccination for first doses. We're pretty excited about that.
Wow, that's great. That's terrific.
Chair Quila?
Yes, Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, sir. Director McNichol, at the Cedar Board Meeting yesterday, I was able to assure the group that we were ready and willing to deliver vaccines. It was only the supply chain issues of having, having the vaccine that was slowing down our ability to meet the needs. So thank you for making it so that we could make that statement with confidence. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. And as soon as we get more, we'll deliver more.
Any other questions for our county health director? Thank you, Dr. McNichol.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Quila. We'll talk to you later.
We'll move on to our next item, which is committee and liaison appointments. So we've got 30 minutes carved out for this, and I hope that we can kind of do this free-flowing and casual, just kind of go through each one of these assignments. We have the score sheet, everybody that's participated in putting their, you know, desires and prioritized what committees they're interested in should be included in the packet here. And we can kind of go down the list and have a discussion about each one as we go. How does that sound to everybody?
It's not as much fun as doing it together, but it sounds like a good idea.
Okay, well, let's, let's just start and, and we can kind of see how we, how we do. We'll start with the, first is the Arts Council of Clatsop County. And, and I know Commissioner Webb has expressed an interest in the Arts Council. So I think that makes it rather easy. If you'd like to serve as the liaison to the Arts Council, Commissioner Webb, we'd love to have that.
Okey doke.
Next is the Class Economic Development Resources. And I know that both Commissioner Toyoka and myself have expressed an interest in that. This, Commissioner Toyoka's number one priority, I certainly think he would be an excellent representative to Cedar. So I think that would be a, a great liaison assignment for Commissioner Toyoka.
I concur with that.
Yeah, Chair Quila, I concur with that too. I attend those meetings and I have, I pony up 100 bucks a year to join with my private business, which I still maintain. So I don't want to step on your toes, but I do like to go to those meetings and participate, Commissioner Toyoka. Is that agreeable to you?
It is.
Swell. Thanks.
Good. We've got strong representation on Cedar. How about the Clatsop Forestry and Wood Products Economic Development Committee? That Commissioner Bangs has, has expressed a strong interest in that committee assignment.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would think with Commissioner Bangs' background, that would be a good fit.
I agree with you. Let's go ahead and, and do that. CFEDC, Commissioner Bangs should be our liaison and report back on the activities of, of that group. Coal PAC, and I know Commissioner Thompson has been very involved with Coal PAC, so I think this is a no-brainer. We'll have Commissioner Thompson remain our liaison with Coal PAC.
Thank you. Mary MacArthur thanks you too.
I'm sure. And similarly, with the Northwest Area Commission on Transportation, the Northwest Act, Commissioner Thompson, I think, should remain as our liaison on that.
Thank you again.
Can I ask a question about, about, um, about the transportation group? Am I remembering correctly that a couple of years ago, we appointed Jim Knight to that group? Is, how do people get, oh, no, Commissioner Thompson is disagreeing with me. Do I have the wrong group, the wrong person, the wrong year?
May I clarify?
Please.
We, we supported Jim Knight to, to go to the aviation group for us, so that he keeps our airports. He's very effective on a statewide basis to keep aviation functional, and he's particularly a good representative for Clatsop County Aviation on that. So he came through, through us to get to that. So we were sort of a throughput agency for that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
But he is connected, so, but not... That says it. I'm going to stop talking.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Thompson, for that clarification. Northwest Economic Alliance.
All, all three of those, yeah, all three of those groups meet at the same time, at the same place. So it.
That makes it convenient? Absolutely. So let's just, we'll get you to continue on in that. The Oregon Consortium Oregon Workforce Alliance.
Yeah, I have, I have been on, going to this group. I have a long history in workforce development. And the, we've had a few snags over the years, but, but it's settling down nicely. And actually, in my report later, I'll talk a little bit about the, the money that's coming into them. I'd be real content to stay on, on that group.
Okay.
Chair Quila?
Go ahead.
I had occasion to speak to Doug Hunt, who's very active in that group, this afternoon on another matter, and he went out of his way to praise Commissioner Webb's representation and participation in that group.
Excellent.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So let's, yes, we'll continue that. 4-H Extension Advisory Service Council. And Commissioner Bangs has expressed an interest in, in the 4-H extension?
Yes, sir. That, that's kind of right up my alley.
Yep. I agree. I agree. So we'll move on to Finance and Revenue Positions, or Finance and Revenue Committees. The AOC Council of Forest Trust Land Counties. And Commissioner Bangs, we have several people that have identified this. Commissioner Bangs has made this her number one priority. And I know that Commissioner Thompson has also expressed interest, as has Commissioner Toyoka.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't have a need to do that. I just wanted to make sure it got done. So I take myself out of it.
Okay. I think Courtney, that would be a good, with, with your involvement with Clatsop Forestry and Wood Products Economic Development Committee, this would be a, a natural for you to be involved in as well.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, sir.
Board of Property Tax Appeals. I can't believe we didn't have more interest in the Board of Property Tax.
You know what? No, no fear making fun of that. The BOP is cool. So, so Commissioner Toyoka, I'm doing other things, but I have to tell you, it's really an awesome place to learn a lot about Oregon property taxes, which I presume you know a lot about in your business capacity. Well, here's the thing. It's, it's a great opportunity. I'm pretty overloaded. I've done it several times in the past. It's, it's a wonderful chance to explain to the community the property tax system in terms that they understand. And if you can't, at least you can listen.
Good luck.
Yeah, well, I know. It doesn't exist. But here's the thing. I have a long-term goal, Mr. Chair. I want to, well, you know me, I'm planning down the road. So if we get very knowledgeable in Clatsop County, we might be effective working with our colleagues around the state to look at property tax revision, or tax revision in Oregon. And I have a not very subtle agenda that you might be interested in that, but you feel free to say no. I would just like to see you do it. That's just my pitch.
No, that's, that's wonderful. I was going to chime in. When Commissioner Quila said there was not much interest, that was when I said I would participate there, because I could bring something, I think, to the table.
I, I think you can too. So let's have you serve as our liaison. We'll move on to the Forest Trust Land Advisory Committee. Commissioner Bangs, you had made that your second priority. Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Toyoka had also expressed interest in that.
I feel like it all is interconnected, and I would love if I could keep on keeping on with the direction I'm going.
Yep, I would defer to Commissioner Bangs.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Excellent. Trying to take my jacket off. Excuse me one second. I got, I don't know how I did that. I got caught up in my jacket. Okay, released. Next would be the Crest, Columbia River Estuary Study Task Force. And this is one group I'd like to be involved in. I think they do a lot of important work, and they're doing a lot with mitigation opportunities and tide gates and things around Clatsop County I have an interest in. So I'd like to be a part of that group.
Yeah. Yeah, with your background, it's, it's a good fit.
The Lower Columbia Solutions Group. That's another one. Go ahead, Commissioner Webb.
Well, I was just going to explain that this is, this is a group that meets very intermittently. And, and what they, what they have been basically working on for the last couple of years relates to the, what is happening to the dredging that, that is going on, on the lower Columbia. And it's a, it's a great group, because it brings a lot of the feds to the table. Obviously, the Corps is a big part of it. And it's, it's, I find it very, very interesting, but there, there is almost, because they're doing a lot of research in terms of where one puts the spoils from dredging. And, and they're really doing some wonderful work about the impact of the ghettys, which of course now are being reinforced and slightly redesigned. So it's an interesting group. There isn't really much to communicate, to, to contribute in terms of, of the county's interests. It's, it's primarily, it's, it's a bunch of, you know, dredging nerds. But it's, but it's cool. I mean, the science is fascinating. But I, as I say, it's, it's not a heavy lift, and it might actually, Chair Quila, it might be something that you'd be, you know, that would inform your, your interest in the waterway stuff.
Yeah, it would. I, I am interested in that. And going back to, and when we had the dredging project at the Skipponon River, and then in the Hammond Marina, all of these were multi-year projects, and so much goes into what you can and can't do during work, work windows, and like you say, spoils. So I am interested. I'd like to, to serve in that. If it's not a heavy lift, that's fine.
Yeah, it's, it's very, very short time.
Next is the Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan Steering Committee. And I know, Commissioner Webb, you had expressed interest in this, correct, as your number four choice?
Yeah, I, I have been actually attending the meetings for the last couple of years.
Okay.
But I don't want to take anything away from Commissioner Thompson.
No, I'm happy to share.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. We'll just have you continue on there, Commissioner Webb. Oregon Coastal Zone Management Association. This is one that I know you've expressed an interest in, Commissioner Webb. And, and I would be fine if you want to be the liaison to that group. I, I have been, and I just, I have not attended, so it's just been something that I haven't been, and I, I'm interested in it, but it's just been something that I haven't been able to, to, to be involved in. So if you're, if that's something that you'd like to be the liaison to, I'd certainly defer.
Okay, great. Thanks.
The Soil and Water Conservation District.
Wait, wait, Chair Quila, then who's the?
Did I miss one?
Who, no, who's the alternate for OCZMA then?
Do we need one?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess we do.
Oh.
Just, it's good.
Are you, I mean, I'm happy to be the alternate unless you want to, Commissioner Thompson?
Oh, no, sir. I'm happy. I just want us to have somebody named. So I'm happy to defer to you in that.
Okay, I'll be happy to serve as alternate, Commissioner Webb.
Okay, great.
Soil and Water Conservation District.
Um, there's an interesting dynamic going on with that group right now. It is composed of a number of people who, well, it's, it's, it's composed of a board of people who are actually elected according to their district. And the districts don't fully coincide with our, with our commission districts, but, but somewhat. And there have been some, I have found it actually a very difficult group to come to understand. I have, I am not terribly impressed with the way the group functions. And even though I have a deep interest in, in the farm sector in our county, I have found it a very frustrating assignment, because I just feel that the group doesn't function very well, and, and that it needs some very serious leadership. We are simply, I mean, this is not a voting position. It's simply an informational liaison. And, but it's, they meet locally, when they meet in person. And so I'd be happy, if somebody else would like to step into the role, I'd, you know, be happy to hand over my files and my opinions.
Commissioner Bangs has, I see Commissioner Bangs has identified that as, as one of her interests. Would you like to take that on?
Um, yeah, certainly I can do that. It's, from all intensive purposes, it's right up my educational alley with farming. So I'll be happy to take that over.
Next is the Public Safety Coordinating Council. And I have Commissioners Toyoka, Thompson, and Webb that have expressed interest in this. And I know, like, Toyoka, you had, you had kind of contacted me too, that you had, 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 I guess, a little more interest in this recently.
I do. I talked to the sheriff, and I asked him more details about what is involved, and that piqued my interest even more, that I could actually contribute, and this is an area I'd like to get involved in.
Okay. Sure.
That sounds great.
That sound good?
And, and if you need a backup, I'm happy to be your backup.
Do we, do we, so do we have, just, that's a good question about backups. So which ones need back, which ones don't? Do we, you know?
Generally, we don't usually assign backups. It's just the OCCMA that, or the Oregon Coastal Zone Management that needs a delegate and an alternate.
Okay. But we can note that, Commissioner Thompson, you can, you can fill in if, when Commissioner Toyoka can't be there. About the Fair Board, I see, Courtney, I know, I think you'd be perfect, Courtney, to be the liaison of the Fair Board. I really have enjoyed that group. They're, they're fantastic people to work with. It's just my time is stretched. So I would be happy if you wanted to take that on.
Yeah, certainly I can take that on. I've, I've had a part in the Fair Board, you know, about, about a decade ago, so it'd be, be nice to get back into it.
Super. Recreation Land, Recreation Lands Advisory Committee.
Yeah, this is, wait, yeah, this is an interesting one, because I thought that I was the liaison to the group for the last two years, and have been functioning as such. So seeing Kathleen's name, I thought, oh, whoops. Was I impersonating somebody here? But I, I have enjoyed, I've really enjoyed my tenure on the board. And I, I think that the parks depart. But I, I have enjoyed, I've really enjoyed my tenure on the board and I, I think that the Parks Department, you know, being, being under the, the wings of, 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 of the Public Works Department. I, I think that one of the things I've accomplished is that I've been able to kind of bring parks planning into the compliance process and, and made it a little bit closer to, to an economic development focus. And, and I'd really like to stay connected. The projects that happen here are, they tend to be long-term. And so, so that, you know, something that the committee talks about now isn't going to come to fruition for five years maybe. So I, I kind of like to hang in there with them. It's a great group. It's also a terrific group of citizens and wonderfully staffed, so I, I kind of like.
Fantastic, yeah. I, I, does anybody have any issues? I, I think that'd be great. I think it's nice to have that consistency and certainly they need a champion when it comes to the budget and net pens and all the things they got going on. So I think that's fantastic if you want to remain in that liaison assignment. The Service Area Advisory Committee. I mean, the only one I, the only thing I thought about is that this kind of fits with maybe the Board of Health. Do you think that that's something that kind of, I, it's, I mean, I didn't want to speak for you or volunteer you, but just wondered if that might be something that, that might fit in there. Nobody has identified it.
I think it's a relatively low. Well, but I'm, I'm noticing that it's, that Tiffany Brown staffs it, which puts it in a little bit different context for me.
Okay.
And I'm also not clear actually of, of what they, what their function is.
Chair, yeah, for the members of the board, maybe I can just provide a little bit of background. So what that committee is really chartered with is to oversee the franchise that we have for the ambulance provider. And so we have an ambulance service agreement which is required by statute that basically defines the, the, the service area and the service levels and the relationships. And so this is a group that just oversees that franchise. So Tiffany does a great job staffing it. It's not a big time commitment, but it is one of those oversight functions. And so, but that's how I would characterize it. It has a number of representatives from the ambulance, from hospitals, from medical side. Mike McNichol, I think, is also on the group. And so it is, it is a very specific, more medically oriented group, but it really is, it's really a franchise oversight group.
It's an important function, if I may, Commissioner Webb, because they're stretched so thin and how to be able to provide it to the remote areas in this and other counties. I mean, so someone with your scope of vision, I think, would be, would be well suited to it. Just saying.
Thank you.
Is that okay, Commissioner?
I'd be happy to do it, sure.
Okay, fantastic. And Board of Health, you've been serving in that capacity. I assume that you'd like to stay doing that with, with, with our Health Department.
I really, I really would. I really would.
The Community Action Team. Commissioner Thompson, you've been serving as our liaison to the Community Action Team. I know that the, the meetings are virtual now, so you don't have to.
Yeah.
Don't have to drive to scappus.
It was a four, it was a four-hour gig. It was, it was a long day. They're a great group of people. They do wonderful work. Virtual is much better in terms of, well, and they've been kind enough to put me in some leadership roles. So yes, I'd like to continue with that.
Okay, fantastic. The Human Services Advisory Committee. Both Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Toyoka had expressed interest in this.
I'm happy to yield to Commissioner Toyoka.
Would you like to serve as liaison, Commissioner Toyoka?
That sounds wonderful. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson.
Commissioner Webb and I are going to meet, we're going to talk about NOAA and stuff tomorrow. I, I know that this has been something that you've been, this has been near and dear to you. So I would assume that you want to continue on as the liaison for NOAA.
I do. I do. Thank you. And, you know, just, you know, for, for everyone else's information, I, I think I've been trying to report, there have been a, it's been a very difficult assignment for the last couple of years because the, the organization itself has gone through some, some really difficult legal and other challenges. And we're kind of still in the middle of rebuilding the organization. So I'd, I'd love to see that through.
Thank you. We've got the Northwest Senior and Disability Services. And Commissioner Bangs, you have expressed interest in that?
Um, yeah, I can, I can definitely take over that.
Does anybody else have an interest as well, or? Okay. Commissioner Bangs. You will be our liaison to NWSDS. Now, Professional Associations, we have the Association of Oregon Counties, various committee opportunities. And the National Association of Counties. And I know that Commissioner Thompson, you're very involved with AOC. Is there anything in particular that we are, we should be addressing within these two liaison assignments?
Oh, thank you for that softball over the plate, Chair Quila. Well, they, they schedule the policy meetings so that there are three really important ones between eight and 10:00 in the morning. Because that's all we have staff for and all we have time for. So Commissioner Webb has been going to natural resources. I wonder if that would naturally shift to Commissioner Bangs since she's doing the Council of Forest Trustlands and those kinds of things. Well, that's up to you two to figure out. All I want is that we have Clatsop County Commissioners attending the, all of the policy meetings. I want us present there because we really make a difference when we're present. And as you pointed out, Chair Quila, now that we're in virtual meetings, it's an easier lift. I mean, it's still, it takes thought, takes participation, takes time, but it, what a, what a remarkable return on the investment. And we understand, we learn from our colleagues. I'm delighted you two are going to county college, but this is how it plays out in the real world. And, and we get to practice convening so that we can do it better at home. We get to share best practices with our fellow commissioners and judges all over the state and, and we get to promote Clatsop County's interests. Hopefully that translates into money and services for taxpayers in Clatsop County because that is the name of the game. Tony Hyde, remember, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. We want to be at the table. And so I would, I would encourage my colleagues to look at the, at the AOC agenda, find a policy meeting and, and let AOC staff, Sarah Gomani, know and she'll get you in there because it really turns out to be pretty good fun as well as doing good for the county. So I'll just say that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Commissioner Thompson.
Commissioner Quila, I, I just have one clarifying question.
Yes.
For the ambulance service advisory committee, was that Commissioner Webb?
Correct.
Okay, then I think I have everybody.
Um, I would just like to say, I too am so pleased that the two new commissioners are going to attend county college. I have a very deep background in government service, but I learned a lot. And, and it, it's, I, I just, I can't, I can't recommend it enough. It, it's, it, it, you'll, you'll make friends with, with commissioners and still, you know, there are times when, when people in my class, as we call it, you know, I'm on a, I'm on an AOC or some kind of another meeting with them. And, and it is, the, the amount of knowledge that you pick up from it is wonderful. And it's a great introduction to, to AOC because in a lot of the other things that you do, it's really nice. AOC has, they're, they are primarily made up of lobbyists who, who are experts in certain fields. And they're wonderful resources. It's really great to go there, make friends with them, connect, and so that you know who to call when, when you often, when you, when you need information on something. They're really a great resource. So I would say just go for it. And I think, I think that what Commissioner Thompson and I have been doing for the last couple of years is we've been, we've been kind of shouldering the AOC. I won't call it a burden, but we've been shouldering the responsibilities. And it would be wonderful to have other people to, to jump in and, and, and do some of this, this lifting with us because we, it's just good, it's very good for the county. It's very good for the county. So.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Commissioner Webb. I appreciate, we, we do appreciate both you and Commissioner Thompson's involvement and, and certainly beneficial for our goals in the end to, to have that connection to AOC and to, 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 to other groups that are, are making some pretty monumental decisions.
Yes.
So appreciate all your efforts there. So we're done with the liaison assignments. Everybody feel good about that? We can, we can go ahead and move into the Habitat Conservation Plan.
Commissioner, Chair Quila, members of the board, if I might just kind of frame this really quickly. I think that, like, kind of, this is kind of a continuation of the last discussion. Anytime that there is a major public policy process taking place, whether it's a boarding committee or really otherwise, one of the real questions always is, is that how does, how do the various stakeholders, and in this case, Clatsop County, interface with the state and their process as they work through the Habitat Conservation Plan? And so I thought it's, it's a good conversation just to, so that we can engage in the process in a way that can provide the county the best opportunity to interface in, in a positive, timely way in, in the process. And so, and so this is just an opportunity with the new board is to have that conversation about how we might engage at that level so that we can be as prepared and as, as engaged as we can. So I'll just leave it at that and see if the board would like to talk about that. So.
Chair, may I?
Yes.
I start off.
Yes.
Thank you. So I think all of us can possibly agree. I know in my personal opinion, an HCP is not a bad thing. I, I do feel like as it's written, it's going to be pretty painful for Clatsop County. And I feel like we need to have some strong conversations with the Oregon Department of Forestry in regards to the HCP. I, at this time, I don't think that ODF has ever addressed with the counties what the minimum amount of acres that we have to set aside in order to obtain that HCP. It kind of feels like, you know, there's been a, a drop in communications. There's no evidence that I can see over the two meetings that they've held with the counties or with, with Trustland Committee that anybody was ever involved in the negotiations that had the county's best interest at heart. I feel like they are planning on taking the kitchen sink and maybe, maybe we could just, you know, negotiate giving them the faucet rather than the entire kitchen. I, you know, as Clatsop County stands, we have the fewest threatened and endangered species compared to other counties. And despite this lack of species issues, the impact slated for Clatsop County is the same as other counties across the board. And I just, I just really want to open up conversations with Department of Forestry. It makes me extremely nervous. I feel like, you know, with these, but with the cut in, in funds, that's going to filter down. I mean, it's a 20% decrease in volumes harvested, which will be, or 20% increase in volumes harvested, which is going to be a 20% decrease for revenues for our county. I phrased that wrong. I apologize. It's a decrease in volumes harvested, decrease in revenues. But it, it's going to hit all of our small taxing districts, schools, fire departments, sheriff, ESD, all of these districts that already struggle to function on the amount of money that they have. And I feel like we really need to advocate for these small districts. Again, I, I think an HCP is great. I think it's valuable for our county going forward. It's just, I want to open discussions with ODF that says, hey, you know, how can we do this? How can we move forward and justify it to our small districts? And I kind of want an accounting for, for our acres, like, why? Why this allotment of acres? Give us the reason so that when somebody's calling us later, we can have an open, educated discussion with them on why we're having this impact. So anyhow, thank you.
Yeah, and this is a question, I guess, for either Commissioner Bangs or for County Manager. Where, what status is the HCP or where, where is the HCP at in the process?
Commissioner Bangs may have more recent information than I do, but I still, I mean, it's, it's really in the working analysis process within ODF is what my understanding is. I don't know, I mean, they have had a lot of meetings, obviously, with stakeholders, but I would defer to what, what the commissioners know. Since Commissioner Sullivan was the representative, she was taking kind of the lead on it. So I will defer to what the board knows.
Yeah, I, I would, I, I, I don't think I would completely, I, I definitely don't agree with Commissioner Bangs's characterization. We have been very involved and a number of our citizens have been very involved in the process. I have attended, I think, every one of the, of the meetings that were held on it. And there's an awful lot of very good scientific evidence to support. And the status is that at the last forestry meeting, the Board of Forestry meeting in, I think it was October or November, the board gave instructions to the ODF staff to proceed with, with formulating the HCP. And, and were committed to, to proceeding with it. And, and so it is going to happen. There were some doubt that maybe ODF or the board wouldn't bless the, the work that's been done so far, but they did and instructed ODF to move on. And as I say, I guess we can disagree about, about the specifics on the plan, but I certainly agree with the fact that we need to be at the table.
I, I agree. I think we do, I think we need to fully understand what the ramifications are. I would like to know, I guess, what, at what point does the county have an opportunity to provide any additional input or, or comment or, you know, I, I don't know where that, you know, where that.
I think, I think that's our decision.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the way the process has, I think it's, it's, they've been working.
I sent.
I sent an email to Mark Kajala.
I don't know who that is.
I'm Pamela Matts McDonald. I sent you an email about the fucking.
Yeah. And I also responded to you too. So.
I, I apologize. I just, uh, sent her out.
Yeah. This is, you know, that's the second time that that has happened where someone comes on and swears.
Right.
How, I don't know what we need to do to, to keep, keep some decorum.
Same person.
But sure.
Same person, same person both times.
Yes, I know. So it's just, uh, it's, it's something going to happen. I mean, I don't know how you monitor that and you stop it in a virtual setting like this, but we certainly don't need people coming on and swearing during our work sessions or regular meetings. Anyway.
Mr. Chair, could I just ask, can we ask County Council to give us some, uh, guidance on how to maintain decorum in a public meeting and still not, not in this moment, but going forward to send us an advisory on how to maintain decorum and still not impinge free speech rights?
I, I think that would, yes, be something very worthwhile to investigate. So thank you.
Okay. Chair Quayle, I had a question on the HCP.
Yes.
Just pardon my newness, but have we had a public forum or something at our, at our own county level where constituents can discuss, uh, HCP issues with the commission to find some more feedback? You know, direct feedback from our constituency? Or have we done that at some point previously? You know, I, I've only done so much reading, so I haven't seen anything like that yet.
And we had, go, go ahead. Who is, Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Webb were both raising their hands. Commissioner Tom.
Thank you. I, this has been an area of great concern for me. I know this is a very emotional issue for a lot of people. I know that, um, on all sides of this issue, it's very emotional. On financial impact, it's very emotional. On what it means for our environment and our biodiversity, it's very emotional. I've, I've, for six years and more as a commissioner, I've been involved with this. My concern is that Commissioner Toyoka has raised exactly the right point. We have not had a community discussion on this. The way the Board adopted a policy, and I've been going through my old emails and I've sent to the county manager, what happened was in the commissioner comment section of a board meeting, a commissioner said, well, this is what I think our policy is, and if no one objects, our forestry policy, and if no one objects, I'll take this forward. I objected strongly. There was no public notice. There was no public input. There was no public vote by the commissioners. There was simply saying, oh, this is Clatsop County's position. So I agree that there has been a process. It has not, however, followed what I would consider to be the model of good governance. So I think your question, Commissioner Toyoka, is exactly the right one. I don't know about the ODF process because, you know, that train is, that train is moving down the track. But we as a county, in order to be good neighbors and we commissioners, in order to both look at a healthy environment and a healthy economy, need to do better listening to each other. So I hope that we do that and empower all of us to go forward as good neighbors, having discussed it and come to a properly noticed, properly discussed, properly voted on Clatsop County forestry policy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I, I think it, I mean entirely appropriate that we have a, a further discussion on this. And we have two new commissioners that, and I know Commissioner Toyoka expressed a desire to learn more. I think it, uh, certainly makes sense to know more about what, you know, what the plan is and, and what it, you know, could mean for Clatsop County. And then as we get a very, I mean, if we get an informed opinion, we can provide some additional comment to, to Department of Forestry, maybe have them actually come and, and talk again to, to the group. Uh, but I think that's entirely appropriate. So we can maybe schedule that for a, a future meeting. I, I also think that, you know, we have our natural resources industries like fishing, commercial fishing, farming. Um, I, I think it's, it's good to get, uh, them before us, um, in, in this forum from time to time, uh, to kind of learn about what, what their, um, issues are and, 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 uh, the state of the industry. Certainly everything has changed in the last year, but it, it wouldn't hurt to, uh, to get a more in-depth perspective from folks in the industry, whether it's, you know, commercial fishing or, or, or farming, um, and certainly forestry and timber, um, as well. So yeah, I hope we can continue to do that and, and do that at future meetings. Um, since we've got three minutes, do you guys take a three-minute break and come right back?
Teresa, have you heard from IT about my camera at all?
No, I haven't. I sent him a message, but I have not heard back. So I apologize.
Oh, that's fine. I'm just, it, it, it would be nice for everyone to see my smile. No, I'm just kidding.
Well, we can be in here in three minutes, everybody. Looks like we're getting everybody back. And Commissioner Thompson, are you? Are you back? We'll wait just a minute here. There, there she is.
Thank you. Sorry.
All right. We'll go ahead and convene the meeting of the Board of Commissioners as the governing body of Clatsop County, all county service districts for which this body so acts. And as the Clatsop County Local Contract Review Board, we're now meeting in regular session. Can the roll call be taken?
Commissioner Thompson?
Present.
Commissioner Toyoka?
Present.
Commissioner Webb?
Present.
Commissioner Bangs?
Present.
Chair Quayle?
Present. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Thompson moves to approve the agenda.
Webb seconds.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
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 All of, all those opposed? Agenda's been approved. We'll go, uh, onto business from the public. So this is an opportunity for anyone to give a two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda, except for public hearings or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. So Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public who have registered to speak?
No, there are not. I, I did receive some letters, which I forwarded on to you, and they will be submitted into the record. But there's no, uh, people who've signed up to speak.
Yeah. Thank you, Clerk. I know that we received some letters, uh, and I think they were mostly uh, about the resiliency project. We will be meeting in a work session to discuss the resiliency project. Am I right, County Manager?
Yes, Chair Quayle, members of the board, there'll be a Friday work session at 11 o'clock in the morning. And there will be two subjects. One is just a quarterly update on our financial position, which will take about 10 minutes. And then the rest of the time, we will be talking about the resiliency project.
Thank you, County Manager. So is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? We've got the consent calendar in front of us. Everybody's had their appetite to review it. Um, is motion to approve it?
Thompson moves to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We've been seconded to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to the commissioners liaison reports. And just going from left to right, we'll start with Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a beautiful day in the neighborhood. Um, we've had public works down in the neighborhood filling potholes, which is always a wonderful thing. The only, um, suggestion I would have to Department Director McLean is find a way to give yourself credit for that because the neighbors don't know that it's your good work that, uh, is performed here. So I don't know how you advertise filling potholes, but I think it would be a good thing to let the neighbors know because we are grateful for that. We started doing a drive around, uh, with, uh, that wonderful Cannon Beach Fire Board Member, Bob Sorelli, who knows the roads in Arch Cape like nobody else. And he pointed out, um, a whole bunch of, of, uh, good community input. There's a division of opinion about whether or not the Shark Creek Bridge needs to be replaced. And it's a matter of considerable difference of, uh, financing. So there's more work to be done, but it's well begun. I want to commend county staff because as we were headed north, sorry, headed south, the four of us in the car, Bob Sorelli, the roadmaster, his assistant, and myself, the county dump truck was attempting on a double yellow line signaling a left turn to turn in to fill more potholes. And an impatient driver came around and smashed into them, um, doing some injury to the truck and injury to the staffer. So in, just in case we weren't already grateful for what they do for us in terms of the service, they put themselves on the line every day for us, right down to the road department. So, so thank you to those good staffers. So we'll go forward, we'll go forward looking at really on the ground what's going on. The Planning Department has had, um, meetings yesterday morning and this morning to talk about the complaints in the neighborhood about short-term rentals because we've had some communication about that too. A lot of neighbors, again, a lot of different sides in this issue. Um, a lot of people wanting to be heard. So we'll do that public process. A lot of people have been receptive to the idea that the issue at hand is how do we be good neighbors with each other? Not demonizing people, not, not looking to make war with anybody. So we're, we're making good progress on that. Commendation again to the planning staff. Excellent process here. Hooray for the neighbors of all kinds doing excellent work to build trust and a more functional county government. So, and good neighborhoods, good neighborhoods, number one. Thank you, sir. That's enough for me today.
Great message. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Bangs?
Yes. Um, so I had a wonderful meeting with the Public Works Department and Mr. McLean and company, um, here regarding the Westport progress. Um, they are quite a fun group to talk to and very knowledgeable. Um, it gave me a lot of hope and a kind of a light at the end of the tunnel in regards to the progress in Westport and, um, its future. Uh, then I've had three meetings in regards to, um, preschool and childcare, um, recently. And I must say that it's, it's going to be a long process, but it's nice to know that there are so many individuals that are extremely engaged and, and wanting success in our county in regards to preschool and childcare. Um, I know many of you know Dan Gaffney very well and high regard for that gentleman and all of his knowledge that he brings to the table. Um, and then a kudos, uh, to Public Works because they did, I, I got a phone call here the other day, um, raving about what a great job they did rocking our rural roads, especially right before our icy mornings, these past couple mornings. Um, they, they hit a good portion of our rural community out here. And so, um, we're very grateful for their good works.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. I couldn't agree with you, uh, more about Dan Gaffney. And we are so fortunate to have him in our community. I mean, he is a champion for, for, uh, for daycare, for, for preschool, um, and his knowledge and expert experience is very valuable. So I'm just glad that, uh, we're engaged. I'm glad he continues to be engaged. Uh, thank goodness. Commissioner Toyoka?
Hello. Just, uh, having recently reset the assignments, not for the liaison and for the appointments to the commission, uh, very happy that I've had a great conversation with Sheriff Phillips and working with, uh, the sheriff and the staff on the Public Safety Coordinating Council. That's going to be very, you know, topical right now with all the challenges that they're, that they have in front of them. Uh, also looking forward to being on Economic Development Resource with Cedar, Board of Property Tax Appeals and Human Services Advisory. So everything that we have been assigned to, I'm just thankful that I get to help and participate for the county and represent everyone here.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. We really appreciate you taking on those assignments. Commissioner Webb, can you hear me?
Oh, I can now. You, I'm sorry. You, you froze for a second.
Okay.
I didn't.
Doesn't happen.
Incidentally, does it look like your wife has, uh, set up a room for you in the garage?
Yes. She does not want me, uh, to, uh, expose the shelves anymore, so I have a sheet.
I love it. I just love it. I love it. Um, yeah, I really don't have a whole lot to report from. Um, we are at the point now, um, in NOAA, uh, that we have actually begun to work on a number of, of specific. NOAA that we have actually begun to work on a number of, of specific projects. We have three very major facilities being developed in each of our three counties, one in St. Helens, one in Warrenton, and one in Tillamook. And we'll be coming to you, I hope, within a couple of months to talk about those, and, and to give you some background on all the exciting, good, new things that are going on at NOAA. We have completed the transfer of Owens Adair from the Clatsop Housing Authority. And I understand that our council is going to proceed with some kind of a formal dissolution of the Clatsop County Housing Authority, because we have now transferred all of our properties over to NOAA. And there's no reason so, so we can dissolve this. We, incidentally, the Clatsop County Housing Authority was the board, was the, the County Board of Commissioners. And so after, after a number of years of, of bumpy roads and some very difficult real estate transactions, that has, that has been completed. That was one of my objectives when I joined the commission two years ago, and it's done. On the, on the workforce front, one of the very interesting things that came from, out of the CARES Act, that I think I wasn't paying enough attention to, was the amount of money that was given to workforce systems to augment some of their activities. And so we're in the position, I think I've mentioned this to the board before, but, but the good, the good news and bad news about workforce funding is that when the, when the unemployment rate goes up, we tend to get more money. And, and so that's the only good news that I have for you in this pandemic. But one of the things that, that I, I'd like to talk with, with the staff about is getting the word out to a lot, to, first of all, to our staff, who hire, especially those who hire seasonal workers, because we're gonna have some regional money. So for instance, if Public Works wanted to put together work crews, we, we could, we could, we could get money from, from, from work systems to do that. So there is gonna be some money. So I'd love for you folks who monitor Cedar, et cetera, you know, to, to be aware of that. Kevin is, is, is very hooked in to our, to our funding availability, and has done a terrific job with the CARES Act, as far as I'm concerned, with communicating with, with local businesses. But, but it's something that the county, too, can avail ourselves of, and, and perhaps some of our nonprofits, who also, you know, hire, at least for temporary projects and things like that. So that money, that's, we're gonna see a significant increase. The other issue that I wanted to share with you is that in, we're in a, the, the Workforce Board is a five-county. It's, it's Columbia, Clatsop, Tillamook, Benton, and Lincoln County. Benton County is a, is an outlier in it. I, I, I'm very uncomfortable when a workforce, when a regional entity doesn't respect labor markets, but, but unfortunately, when this board was put together, it didn't. But the, we supply a large part of the money that, that constitutes the staff in the Work Systems Program in Oregon. And we only have one facility in Clatsop County, and it's in Astoria. And they have been work, doing a combination of remote work and also by appointment onsite. So if you're, if any of your constituents have questions, and I'm, I'm gonna talk to Kevin Leahy about maybe making, putting more of the word out about the fact that, that we're gonna be able to be a lot more vigorous in service, in, in, in servicing unemployed people, which now, of course, we have the highest unemployment rate in the region. So, so that's good news. So stay tuned. We'll see how we can get those, that information out. I think that's it.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Webb, good things. And yeah, you're right, Kevin Leahy is plugged in, he's connected and keeps track of all of that. I'm reminded of the SBDC letter that we, that we sent in support of their funding, and I, I wasn't prepared to talk about it, but I know that they had, had a request from Gina from AOC to actually make a presentation to them about our letter. And so I'm gonna have to go back and see exactly when that is, because I think that's important for us to kind of put.
Absolutely.
You, you put ourselves, you know, put a face to it and, and kind of describe exactly what our experience with Cedar and SBDC has been over the last 10 months, because we, we wouldn't have got done what we got done without them. So definitely need to support them.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I don't have anything other than, you know, what I talked about already, really with the vaccines, it's been the big, you know, big priority and, and continues rolling on. And I'm glad that we have Dr. McNichol presenting at our beginning of our work session, kind of giving us an update. With that, I will go ahead and move on to the business agenda. Commissioner Thompson, yes?
Thank you, sir, sorry to interrupt. I asked Jessica Newhall for her slides from yesterday's Cedar meeting, and so those should be coming to the Commissioners, because that provides some additional information that may be useful for you.
Yes.
Okay, all right, just.
Yes, thank you, that, that's, that's great. Yes, I, I would really appreciate to have that as a reference. Item, the first item on the agenda is the Clatsop Plains Elk Cooperative. So a declaration of cooperation is on page 57.
Commissioner Quayle?
Yes.
We have County Manager report?
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Dawn, I didn't just skip over ya.
No, Chair Quayle, members of the board, I was actually hoping that I could slide through, but that Teresa didn't let that happen. Thanks, Teresa, for thinking about me. I'm gonna be really quick, I just wanted to let the board know, if you don't know, that we do have a vacancy on the Planning Commission, and so there will be an advertisement that'll be going out, or may already be out. And then the date for the submission, the deadline is March 1st, and so I just want to let folks know that. And then the others, again, we mentioned it earlier, but there is a work session Friday at 11 o'clock to talk about the resiliency plan and quarterly financial update. And then something I had put in our Friday update is that we will be working soon to look at the population distributions within the five Commissioner districts, and that is a part of the charter requirement. And so when the census numbers come out, then we have certain timeframes that we have to work with and then present maps to your board about how those districts might need to be modified so that they are, you know, equal in distribution as much as possible, and that other factors are also considered. So I just want to put that on everybody's radar, that that will be coming up, and that will be taking place. And, and roughly, once we get the actual numbers from the census from start to finish, it is in about 170, 175 days is, is what we have. So, so just sharing that, and that's all that I have. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, County Manager Boone. Sorry for missing you. I, I'm sure it won't be the first or last time that I overlook something on the agenda, but thank you, Teresa, for, for catching that. We'll move on to the business agenda, which is the Clatsop Plains Elk Cooperative, and it's a declaration of cooperation that's located on page 57 of our agenda. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners, this is Gail Hendrickson, Community Development Director. And also in attendance tonight is Manuel Padilla, who's with Oregon Solutions, and Paul Atwood, who's with Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. They're both here to answer any questions you might have about either the commitments in the Declaration of Cooperation, or anything regarded to the wildlife aspects of this agreement. And so we're here tonight, basically at the end of the beginning of the first phase of the elk project. It started in April 2019, when the Governor convened this panel. It consists of state agencies, government agencies, private property owners, nonprofit agencies as well. And the groups broke themselves into four subcommittees, looking at ways to establish a toolbox of items that could be used to address the elk-human conflicts that we've seen increasing on the Clatsop Plains. And so the committees broke themselves into an elk behavior subcommittee, a land use subcommittee, a data collection subcommittee, and also an elk behavior subcommittee. And those four subcommittees have been working since May of 2019 to put together a list of commitments that each of the jurisdictions or agencies would agree to commit to as we move forward into the next phase of this, which will be the implementation phase. So we did bring a draft to the board back in September of 2020, and we met again with the new board on January 5th of this year to add two more items to the list of commitments for Clatsop County. Those two items were related to the issue of culling and support, or as you may choose, non-support for culling in lands in unincorporated Clatsop County. If the commitment declaration of cooperation is approved by the board tonight, then at some point, at a date to be determined, probably a little bit into the future, there would be actually a formal signing ceremony, which is when we would actually affix our signature to the agreement and then move forward from that. That basically concludes my presentation. As I said, both Manuel and Paul are here to also help answer any questions you might have, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Gail. Do we have any questions? Any discussion? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Well, I have elk in my yard, too, and I'm not in Clatsop Plains, so I wondered if this template, if there's some broader reach that's anticipated for the good work that these people have all done to deal with the issues at some future time.
Gail, this is Manuel, I can probably answer that question.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the, well, thank you first for, for having us here and for taking this under consideration. It's, it's been a, it's been a really amazing project to work on, and the, the county and Gail have been great partners in getting us to this point. So I just want to say thank you first in getting us to this point. So, but to answer the, the Commissioner's question, the answer is yes, it's sort of in a nutshell. But what that has actually been conceived of throughout the project is that this project not only serves as a sort of way to look at and deal with the elk-human cohabitation issue in this microcosm of the Clatsop Plains, but to make it available for people to look at as a template for ways that they could potentially address some of their own elk-human cohabitation issues outside of the Clatsop Plains, and as a, as a really an invitation for those who are curious about, you know, how they might be able to do that, as an invitation to really connect with the main group of, of project team members, any one of them really, but the, the two co-conveners, Mayor Valencifer and Mayor Barber, but, but others as well. They're really available to, to, to anyone who wants to, you know, kind of noodle on, brainstorm around, or potentially, you know, to, to think more of, of a formal sort of connection or collaboration with the, with the work that's happening, to think about that as a possibility as well. And Oregon Solutions would, of course, always stand ready to kind of help with any of those coordinated efforts or those connections, kind of just, you know, potentially during the, for instance, during the, the year to 18-month timeframe in which we, we come back and sort of check up on how things are going. That could be a good opportunity to look at, well, have there been other people who've been contacting project team members interested in sort of understanding the work of that better and potentially utilizing some of the tools or collaborative techniques that were utilized in order to address their own issues outside of the Clatsop Plains? So, so of course, I think the answer to that is yes, and we, we always hoped that this would end up serving as a, as a potential model that would inspire other people as well. So I don't know if that answers your question, though. Is that, is that what you were looking for?
That's a pretty perfect answer, I would say. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions for either Gail or for Mr. Padilla? Sheriff Webb?
I would just like to say that I'm incredibly impressed with the, with the result of this endeavor. I think that any time that you can put this many people with these great numbers of disparate opinions about different issues, this, this, to me, was an example of, of good government at its best. My, my question that I, that I brought to the, to the County Manager was, you know, do we have money for this? I mean, have we, what is this gonna, gonna cost us in terms of a financial commitment? But, but when I rooted into the particulars, there are a couple of instances where groups have said that they will try to seek some funding to accomplish some of the things that they've said they're gonna do. And to me, it just speaks to a, a really terrific community effort, and well-done staff, just well-done guys, really. This is, this is just, I think, it's a terrific example of the kinds of things that can happen when you get the right people in the room with the right attitude. And I'm very proud of our staff for, for making this happen. Very cool, very cool.
Completely, completely agree, Commissioner Webb. So do we have a motion?
Which district is it? Commissioner Toyoka, is it yours?
It's Commissioner Toyoka's.
It's a lot of District 2, yes. And I did have one question, I was trying to get myself off muted there.
Yeah, Commissioner Toyoka.
As far, you know, it's, it's very comprehensive, I enjoyed all the work that was put into it. I did have a question, and I know it's, again, we've talked before in the last work session about, you know, some of the culling options, you know, and that can be controversial to some people, but I was wondering if, if there, if there is in the culling, how is that, you know, whether damage tags, they discussed that, you know, could there be, to address like Commissioner Webb's concern about funding, couldn't there be a fee for those damage tags that would help pay for program and habitat, you know? So I don't know, explore different possibilities, because people would pay, you know, significant fee for those damage tags, and then we can turn it around to help, you know, supplant that program and conservation effort.
Maybe Mr. Padilla could answer that question or address it?
You know, I'm gonna turn this one over to Paul first, so that he can address a couple of those issues that I think I have less expertise on, and I think Paul will be able to better answer those questions.
Okay, great, yeah, thank you.
Chair, members of the commission, my name is Paul Atwood, I'm the District Wildlife Biologist for the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife in Tillamook. To answer the question, Commissioner Toyoka, as part of the Elk Management Subcommittee, we did look at and consider all of the kind of traditional wildlife management tools that ODFW has at our disposal, including any opportunity to use public hunters. our disposal, including any opportunity to use public hunters to help solve some of the population issues in the, within the project area. So, and I would say that we have been and currently are using all of those tools to our disposal where, where we can. One of the big issues with this project, as you might be aware, is that many of the issues are, lie within incorporated cities, state parks, Camp Rylea is in, is within the project area. So that's where our, kind of our classic wildlife management tools with public hunters, you know, don't really fit well, because we just, it's, in, in many cases, it's often illegal to use them.
Okay. I've just been approached by many constituents in, you know, this district. There's a lot of unincorporated land, private land, that, you know, the landowners are already applying for damage tags. I was wondering if we can expand on that, just, you know, be a natural, organic, you know, expansion of that process to help out with this, mitigate the elk damage within the district or within the greater Clatsop Plains.
Absolutely. Where, where it fits and, and where, like, an elk damage tag can qualify by statute, that is a statutory program, so we are limited in some of the ways that we can use that, but we certainly take advantage of using that program as much as we can.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Chair, I just wanted to make note, for the good of the order, how happy I am to hear about this Declaration of Cooperation and all of the work and effort that's gone into this, because not only is it gonna be beneficial for our public, but it's gonna be beneficial for the herd health. And it's always good to be good stewards of not only our constituents, but, but for the wildlife that, that is within our, our county. And so after talking with Mr. Atwood at our previous work session, the culling methods and so on and so forth, I can 100% support, because unmitigated growth of a herd is extremely dangerous for herd health. It puts them at risk for starvation, hoof rot, and other diseases. And so just looking forward to seeing how this plan comes, comes about. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Any other comments? If none, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Anyone?
So, so I'm waiting for Commissioner Toyoka, because it's his district.
Very well, then I'll make a motion to...
Make a motion?
I will make the motion. That we adopted the Declaration of Cooperation with the Clatsop Plains Elk Collaborative.
I move to second that motion.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Banks, seconds. Moving second to approve the Clatsop Plains Elk Cooperative Declaration of Cooperation. All those in favor signify with an "I."
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to the next item. And thank you very much, Mr. Padilla, and Paul, and Gail. Thank you. On to the 4H and Extension Service, Copish Road Lease Agreement. It's on page 78 of the packet. And who's gonna be presenting on this?
I will, Commissioner.
Monica Steele.
Yes, and I'm just working on getting my screen so that I can share it with you all. And can you currently see an image on web map?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. And it looks like it's kind of covering up what I'm trying to have it show. Okay, so this is in regards to a piece of property, and in the agenda summary, I said it was deeded in 2005, but after further investigation with property management, it was actually deeded in 1987, and it was deeded by the county to the 4H and Extension District. And it has a reversion, if not used for horse and livestock-related 4H activities only, that the property would then revert. It's approximately 1.89 acres. It originally, and you can kind of see where that 1101 is, you can kind of see a rectangle there, and that is where there was originally a horse arena. There was, there's fencing along there. And then you can also see there's an ingress there that then kind of loops around a tree, a tree or a bush or something that people would pull in and then pull back out on. So there used to be a horse arena there. It hasn't been used in several years. This picture was taken in 2016, is our most recent aerial photo. And, and the neighbors, you know, it's, the property has just been there. This property that numbered 1100, that is owned by the county, owned by the county currently, and it is an active fill site. You can see down here that the county uses this actively as a fill site. The, the neighboring property that the county owns is approximately 21.7 acres. So, back in the summer of 2020, there were improvements made to this property, to this horse arena, by the 4H Association. But unfortunately, while the efforts that they made were greatly appreciated, the proper process to do so wasn't followed. And so there wasn't a need for building permits, because it's just a fence, and the fence is less than six feet in height. But there was a need to have a grade and fill permit put, issued, because they brought in more than 30 cubic tons of fill, which they've been using sand for the arena. So they're currently working with the Planning Department to, to bring that part into compliance. The other problem when, when this took place is, you know, there's liability requirements, and we need to make sure that if we're going to be allowing activity out here, that the 4H and Extension District is properly protected. And so there's insurance requirements that need to be met. And because it's dealing with horse and livestock as well as youth, those, those liability insurance requirements are pretty significant. So, in an effort to, you know, use this property, what, for what it was intended to be used for, we've been working with the 4H, the 4H and Extension District, along with the 4H Association, has been working to get everything in place so that we could have a lease in place between the district and the 4H Association. This property, and Commissioner Banks can probably speak to it, but when 4H activities happen, it's frequent that their activities are kind of regional. So this arena doesn't have a large population of people who are going out here. It's for the 4H Horse Club, and it's, it's a pretty minimal group that is using it. As you can see in your packet, they have a plan in place. Not far from here is a feed shop, and so the person who's a member of the 4H Association would be able to have a key checked out to them. They have a whole system in place to make sure that it's, it's not being used improperly. And, and in regards to the concerns about neighbors and, and parking, those, those conversations have been had with the neighbors out there. And you can also see right off of Copish Road, there is kind of like a cleared-out area, and that is where parking often is, is occurring. There is a future desire by the 4H and Extension District to be able to use this property for potentially other purposes. That would require a change in the deed restriction, and so there are conversations, and that's something else that would need to come before the Board, because as I mentioned in the beginning, when this, when this was deeded to them, there, there were specific restrictions that it is only to be for 4H activities for horse and livestock. So, those are, that's, that's all the information that I have. I'm here to take more questions if there are some. I would just note that one other thing that came out after the packet was put together is, we learned that this, this association was referencing themselves as the 4H Leaders Association. And after doing some research on the Secretary of State website, they changed their name in 2015, and so it's just the 4H Association. So if you do choose to make a motion to approve this lease agreement, I just ask that when you make the motion, you remove the word leaders in the motion that's written for you. So I'm here for any questions. Oh, and I do have, sorry, one more, or two more images. This is what the new arena looks like. This was taken, it's not a recent photo, this was taken back in August of 2020. And so you can see some of the work that they've done. They've replaced that fence, and then you can also see some sand piles that they are using to fill in the arena for, for the horses. So, that is all I have, and I'm going to see if I can turn my screen back over, or what I need to do to give my screen back to Teresa.
Thank you, Monica. Do we have any additional staff reports? If not, we'll go ahead and move to any questions or comments from the Commission. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I have, I have a concern about the, some of the terminology that we're using. I think that I'm not clear about what, about the legal conveyance of this property. It looks like, just, help me understand. This, this property was offered to the 4H folks by the county?
Yeah, the, the county back in 1987 did a quick claim deed to the 4H and Extension District that turns the property over to the district. And so it, with that deed restriction in there, that it be used specifically for these purposes.
Okay, so we, the, so why, if we no longer own the property, why are we talking about a lease to extension?
Because, because the 4H and Extension District owns the property, and you are the Board that oversees the 4H and Extension District.
Okay, okay, okay. My biggest concern, and I, I don't know if Gail Hendrickson is still on the, on the call, but my biggest concern in looking at this, were, oh, good, Gail is still here, was, was access and egress. Unfortunately, I haven't driven, I've never been that far out on Copish Road, but I, I'm concerned about parking as an issue, and, and exiting and accessing the property, and what kind of a, it wouldn't be a curb cut out here, but, but, you know, what does that road look like in terms of a driveway? What kind of traffic issues might there be? Is there, you know, usually in a, in a site plan, we'd want to see a, a marked parking area, especially when we're talking about teenage drivers. And I assume we're talking also about, about horse, what's the word I'm looking for?
Carriers?
Yeah. So I can see that traffic, you know, could, could be an issue here. And, and the property directly north of it, excuse me, I've got my, directly south of it is not owned by the county.
The property directly south is owned by the county. The county is south and east.
Okay.
I closed out. Yeah, it's a fill site, and so it's, it's, there, there's no buildings or anything like that there. It's just used as a county fill site. And then just west of it is Copish Road.
And so that would be, I, I don't, so north of that property, who owns, who owns the?
I'm drawing a blank on their name. I apologize. I had, I had it earlier. I want to say Warner, but I can't say for sure. I can get you that information really quick.
So it's, so it's privately owned?
Yes.
And these people have been contacted, as we would in any permitting process?
The, the 4H Association has informed me that they've talked to all neighbors. This property had been, has been used in this manner in the past. It was used as a horse arena, but just over the years, as far as dwindling participation in the horse clubs or whatever the case may be, it, it wasn't being used on a regular basis, and the arena went into disrepair. And so then it wasn't safe for people to be taking their horses out there. So I, I can't say what prompted the change in 2020. It might have been just people being really bored of being hooped up, and so they started looking for ways to, to get active out there. And so, yeah.
Yeah. So I, I guess I just, in, in the permitting, Gail, can you talk about what it is, what the process is, and what it is that they're requesting the land use review for?
So there's really no land use review that's required. We, we would consider this basically a farm use, where they're doing horse activities. So farm use in that zoning district would be an over-the-counter development permit. For the work that they've done to date, the only permit they would have been required to have had was a grading and fill permit, as Monica mentioned, and that's because they brought in more than 30 cubic yards of fill into the site. So...
Right.
And I did check, and the property owners just north of them is the Girda left.
So it's a, it's a family? I mean, it's in private ownership?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if, 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 if Gail's crew is happy with the transportation issues, then I'll, you know, I, I just think it's a, like I say, that, that's the first thing that jumped out at me, was that it would be a liability, not as the owners, but, but once it hits the road, then it's the county's business. So...
Now, thank you, Commissioner Webb. I appreciate those questions and clarifications. Any other comments, discussion?
Well, I, I do have just a brief comment. I, I drive past this site quite regularly, and I can attest to how fun it is to see some activity on the site. Also, as a previous FFA advisor, I love the, the fact that we're providing a little bit more equity to our children out here in the unincorporated areas. Those children unable to get to town with their horse and trailers can, you know, because it is out here in Napa, they can actually ride their horse to that location. And so I can attest that the turnout is quite sufficient for a truck and trailer and the little path around the trees, though it does get muddy this time of year. I just, I'm, I'm excited to see this for our children. And Commissioner Webb, I do appreciate your concerns in regards to permit processes and so on and so forth. It's, it is just good to have everything considered along the way, to make sure that these children and their families are as safe as possible in this situation. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Good points. Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Good points. I'll entertain a motion.
Just add, if there aren't any other questions, just a reminder, when you read the motion, to remove leaders from the language in the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Could I, could I make the motion?
Sure can.
I move that the board approve the lease agreement between the 4H Extension Service District and the 4H Association as presented and authorize the county manager to sign the agreement.
Second, Thompson seconds.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the lease agreement between the 4H and Extension Service and the 4H Association as presented and authorize the county manager to sign. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next is the adoption of the Klatsepp County Strategic Fiscal Year 2021, 2022. And that's on page 92.
Fair quail, the members of the board.
County manager, yeah, thank you, county manager. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, so this is a culmination of a process that started, hard to believe, in actually late 2020, at least, I guess it was late 2019 in concept. And we really started running in January of 2020. And again, not knowing what was going to happen in March of 2020. Um, but with your board's guidance, uh, we continued the strategic planning process through, through the pandemic. And I think that the product that we have before you today is a great first step for the county to do what is really an, a governance integration project, which is to integrate the planning processes for the board, um, which includes public involvement into a budget that can then reflect the board's, you know, priorities to then performance measurements and then to, to really performance reporting back to the community. So that, so that we can, from planning to execution to outcomes, we can assure the public that, that the county is being relevant and is being smart with how we are trying to affect positive outcomes for their community. And so, um, you know, we did this, this work with the help of PSU Center for Public Service. And Terry is on the line also, and I was going to let, uh, Terry take a few minutes since he walked this project with us. But before I do that, I'm just going to give a little bit of an overview for folks if they may not have been watching as this process has been taking place. Um, it's a process that really has its roots in a number of, uh, board work sessions and then a number of, of, of focus groups, which there were five, which each board member, uh, took on the leadership role of a focus group. And, and over time made a series of recommendations about priority activities, actions that the board and the county should be rallying around as we move forward through the 2021 budget. Um, what the foundation of this process was though, was a situational report that, uh, the Portland State University did for us, which was looking at a lot of the county documents, a lot of the demographic information and helping us understand what some of those impending challenges might look like. Uh, we then did a vision, um, vision session to go over mission. And that then led to the focus group. So what we have right now is there was five focus areas. And they included governance, infrastructure, economic development, environmental quality and social services. So the next step of the program for, for us is to take the 14 Priority One or Tier One and Tier Two actions and develop more detailed work plans for the board. And then make sure that those work plans then get funded through the budget process, um, with you and the budget committee's support. And then it's all implementation after that, as we move forward into the new fiscal year. So this is an annual process. And again, it's a cycle that we like to, to really implement so that it is very predictable for the board and, and for staff. Um, so there'll be another process, um, next fall that will then lead to a new series of priorities and an accounting of the priorities that you just established. And then going through the budget process, performance benchmark. So, so that's kind of how the process has been wired. Um, I think it says a lot about the board's leadership that we have gotten this done in a relatively short amount of time and during COVID. Um, and so I thank the board for your leadership. And I thank the new board members for participating, um, in, in the focus groups, um, and asking questions and, um, learning about the process. So, um, so the task today is just approve it so that staff can start working on, on the work plans and then make sure that the budget represents your goals for next year. Um, but Terry, if you're still on, I wanted to pass it to you.
Yeah, I am here. Um, hello, everyone. It's, uh, nice to see familiar faces again. Um, not just because I don't see any familiar faces these days. Yours are particularly nice to see. Um, I, and Don, um, wanted me, uh, didn't want me to go over an hour, which is probably why he asked me to limit it to five minutes. So I'm going to, I'll, I'll try to be relatively brief here. Uh, and I think Don already gave a great overview. What I want to start with is just, uh, thank you all and tell you what great work you did, because I've worked on a number of these plans. And, um, um, you have a lot to be proud of here. And the way that you all chipped in and did it, and especially, uh, we stayed right on schedule despite the fact that there was no, we shouldn't have been able to do that. So thank you all and, uh, Don and his staff included. Um, I, I, I will be brief. I, I want to say that, you know, ultimately this is a decision-making document. And it's about, what you really want to get to are actions and you have actions there. But the way, sometimes the way people get to actions is by working in small groups and they can work bottom up. You know, so if, if you take an example of a family, um, you know, they're trying to decide whether to go on a vacation. And that, I mean, for some of you, vacation is a concept from the 20th century. You might remember, but not, not talking about vaccinations, I'm talking about vacations. So they were, you know, and they think about it and what do they do? They just go on vacation, right? They don't think about formal principles and goals and guidelines and, uh, all that stuff. So they get right to the action. But when you're a big group, and I will put Klatsepp County as a big group, and you're in the public eye, it's really difficult to just jump to the action because you get challenged on, well, why are we doing this? So it's, it's, it's just incumbent usually to work kind of this top-down way. And that's what we did. We worked from big principles and vision down to, um, some high, high level actions. But we did not get to all the details of those actions. And that's what I want to end my comments with here. Uh, Don talked about the categories, et cetera. Um, and a lot of that work you did and you understand it better than I do. But there, there's a part in there on page 17 where it talks about what, what are the next steps? And I just want to, you know, launch you off there. And the first thing is that you've got a governance action. And the reason that governance is first is because it's the foundation for your other actions. And all the other actions that you want to take in the other sectors will not be as successful if you don't have the governance worked out. So governance is important. Secondly, the strategic plan did not create detailed work plans for each action. So you have actions that are broadly stated. But what we'll find, I hope, is that you don't, you can't launch those actions without some thinking about, well, what exactly are we going to do here? There's going to need to be more work at the beginning with staff working on action plans for those. And the plan acknowledges that. Um, third, even if you get individual plans for all those action areas, there still is a question of how do the things integrate? How are they balanced? Is, is one offsetting the other? And in, if there's a fiscal crunch, what's going to take priority? Those are things that you're going to have to monitor as you go along. And, um, and finally, you're going to need a work plan of your own to monitor this, this year of fleshing out and then beginning to implement those actions. And that is one of your actions as well, is getting a council work plan. So with that, I, I, I want to thank you and say, you know, I guess end with this. Some strategic plans fail really early. Some don't even get started, but the others get, partly get halfway through and then they're abandoned without adoption. You've made it through that hurdle. You now are about to adopt a plan. But the part that is still ahead of you and is critical to your governance part is making this type of planning process a part of your governance. And that is going to require attention and monitoring as you go along. And the first year will be the most difficult. If you can make it through a couple of years, it will become part of the culture and it will become a tool that you can use. If, um, and so if you care about it, then make sure that you spend your time monitoring it. And I wish you the best in doing that. And on behalf of, uh, Portland State University and the Center for Public Services, thank you for the opportunity to help you and, uh, we hope to be able to work with you again.
Yeah, I just want to say, Ms. Moore, thank you for your guidance through the process and making it such a free exchange and collaborative process along the way. They pass that along to your colleagues as well. We just, uh, really, I think it, it was very, uh, uh, enlightening for all of us and we did appreciate, uh, being a part of it. I want to also pass some acknowledgement to, uh, Commissioner Sullivan and Commissioner Nebiker, uh, for their leadership and participation in, in, in producing this document as well. But I think you said it, said it pretty well. It's only as good as you put it into motion. And, and you've got to, we, we really are charged now to use this, um, going forward. So I think that point is well taken and, and thank you so much for, for your help along the way. Any other commissioners, uh, have any comments or questions? Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, sir. I echo, uh, your comments of praise for the PSU Center for our county manager who in his quiet way is quite relentless in this regard. Hooray. Now comes, now is where the rubber meets the road. I would call attention to the fact that Commissioner Hudala came to speak with us at our last meeting. He put, as far as I know, the first strategic plan into place. So I want to acknowledge that that reaches back a decade. I am so delighted that we're going forward to integrate it into annual practice, ongoing monitoring, implementation that continues. Thank you for your good work. We're honored to have worked with you, sir.
A good point, Commissioner Thompson. And I know this has been something near and dear to you. Uh, having this in place during budget season was something that you always, uh, wanted to make sure we accomplished. So, uh, I, I'm sure this has got to be especially gratifying to you. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Toyoka, did you have anything?
I just wanted to say, you know, as, as we were integrated into the commission and given orientation by, you know, county manager and staff, uh, strategic plan was one of the big highlights, is one of the, you know, major documents we were reviewing. And fortunately, we were, we were able to, uh, sit in on some of the planning sessions, the work sessions, um, have some, allowed to be, provide some input, uh, minimal as it was. But at least we were integrated into the process. And through that, I respected the amount of work that was input into this process, the thought. And I really appreciate what the previous commission has done. So with that, I would be honored to move to the.
I want this one, sir.
Okay, I, I, Commissioner Thompson, I wanted to honor you with that.
Thank you. I'm eager. And you know what? I'm going to, Commissioner Quila is right. I've been, I've been working on this for a long time. So thank you for your grace. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt the fiscal year 2021, 22 strategic plan.
Second.
I second the motion.
Okay, moved and seconded, uh, that the Board of Commissioners adopt the fiscal year 2021, 2022 strategic plan. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. And, and thank you. I, I think that the county managers did it up very well. I mean, we had every reason in the world to give up on this, uh, when, when we were going through what we were going through last year. Uh, it took a real resolve in order to get it accomplished. And I'm so glad that we did. So thank you, uh, Terry, and, and pass your best wishes on to colleagues as well.
Thank you.
Next on the list is the Public Works Facilities Needs Assessment Contract on page 124.
Hi, commissioners. As you're all aware, um, county staff have been working on the relocation of the Public Works Facility. And, um, through this process, we have been trying to, um, listen to community feedback and make necessary, uh, adjustments to the process along the way. And through this process, we, um, felt that it would be best if we hired a firm to do a needs assessment. And through this process, um, we submitted or we, um, went out, put out an RFQ. We received six submissions back in late November, went through the interview process and narrowed it down to three firms and then decided upon the firm McKinsey. Um, this process is, is going to help us determine, one, um, if there are any deficiencies to the existing Public Works Facility. We have, um, been located out there for, uh, most likely what Ted can remember is, or, at least over a hundred years. And part of our, um, goal was to get them out of the inundation zone. And so through this process, McKinsey will look at any existing deficiencies in the facility, facility where we're currently located at, as well as look at properties that the county has already identified. And in addition to that, see if there might be any other properties that we might have missed that would be suitable for this as well. Uh, they will also do, um, go through the process of working with staff and looking at our, um, space standards and, um, the needs that we have, not only for office space, but for maintenance space, mechanic space, storage space, and looking at it from a growth perspective as well over the next 40 to 50 years. In addition, um, they will develop a conceptual floor plan. And, um, and when doing all of this, they're also going to go and look at other existing facilities that serve comparable jurisdictions to see, you know, it's easy when you are trying to relocate, say, oh, we need this and we need this. Um, but going to existing facilities that have been built in the last two to five years to see, um, what you really need as well as, um, getting the feedback from those entities in regards to, well, we've been in this building now for a few years and we recognize that we should have done this differently. So getting some of that feedback as well. Um, in addition, when they're trying to figure out the best site location, there is going to be a, um, matrix of, um, different factors to score, different criteria that they'll be using. Some of that will be based on, um, industry standards that they found in doing this type of work for other jurisdictions, as well as some of the needs that are unique to Klatsepp County. Uh, they will also do a site analysis. And so they'll do a cost assessment of the various sites. And through this whole process, they'll then narrow it down to one or two sites. And they'll have a conceptual design. So that way you can kind of figure out how is, how is the conceptual plan going to fit on the site that has been selected or been narrowed down to. We anticipate that this work is going to take about 10 to 12 weeks. And, um, we already have, um, plans, uh, meetings scheduled should this contract get approved by the board tonight to get this project kicked off and moving forward as soon as possible. So that way we can, um, stay on track and, and progress in a, uh, in a good manner. So that way, if we are able to find a site, we can just determine whether or not there is any, um, future extensions necessary for the existing purchase sale agreement that we have in place. So with that being said, um, staff is recommending that the board approve the contract with McKinsey in the amount of $67,400 to conduct the Public Works Facility Needs Assessment and authorize the county manager to sign with any amendment. And I am here for any questions. Oh, sorry, Don has a question. Oh, sorry, Don has a question.
I was just going to, if I might, sure, Quayle, interrupt.
Yes.
I just want to provide a, a little framework. Thanks, Monica, for all that. Is that, you know, part of my goal is to engage in public processes that allow the board comfort, information, and then confidence in, um, in the foundation for them making public policy decisions. And so, uh, and in addition to that is to have a process that the public can have confidence in also and, and be able to understand the basis for the public policy decisions and make sure that their values are also reflected. And so this is just our opportunity to start that process. There's been a lot of work over a lot of years, um, you know, great work from our public work staff, um, framing the issue. But we're at a point where we have to bring in some expertise who can work with your board as we go through this process, not just deliver the answer to you, but have you walk with us and have the public walk with us through some public discussions about what that process is so that by the time we get to the end, we have told the story. Um, and so, so that's really what the goal is. And that's not unlike what we just talked about within the strategic planning process is that you want to be effective at telling your story and making sure that your story is complete. So, uh, Monica went through a lot of the details, but kind of the higher end notion, you know, for, for, for us is to support your board and the public in making the best public policy decisions we can. So, thank you.
Thank you, county manager. Any, uh, discussion, questions from the commission? Okay, not seeing any. Do, uh, do we want to make a motion at this time?
Commissioner Webb's district.
I will be happy to make the motion as soon as I can find it. Okay. I move that the board approve the contract with McKenzie in the amount of $67,400 to complete the public works facility needs assessment and authorize the county manager to sign any amendments.
Is there a second?
Thompson seconds.
Thompson seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the contract with McKenzie in the amount of $67,400 to complete the public works facility needs assessment and authorize the county manager to sign the contract and any amendments. All those in favor signify with an I.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Monica, and thank you, Don. Do we have any items for the good of the order? Well, with that, we've run to the end of all of our business. Do we have an executive session this evening? Nope. Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good rest.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Take care.